Welcome to this board work session. It is beginning at 11:00 a.m. We have two agenda topics today. Before we begin, I'll go ahead and take role of our board members. Ms. Dr. Ricardi Anderson.
Good morning.
Morning. I can't hear you, Dr. Anderson.
Oh, let me check.
Oh, hold on, let me check my volume. Got it. Thank you. It's on my end.
Is this better?
It was fine. It was my end, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Ms. Cohen, are you with us? I see you there.
I'm here.
Yeah, great. Thanks. Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Good morning.
Good morning. Ms. Fresh. I think he's joining in. We'll come back to him. Ms. Kies-Gumar will be absent today. Ms. McLaughlin.
Good morning.
Good morning. Ms. Omesh.
Hello.
Hello. Ms. Bukarski.
Good morning.
Good morning. Ms. Seismar Heizer.
Good morning.
Hi there. And Ms. Tolan.
I'm here. Good morning.
Good morning. And I see Mr. Fresh has not yet joined. So we have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and begin. So today's meeting, this first portion from now until no later than 1:00 p.m. is discussing our budget, our current fiscal year '21 budget. And I see Mr. Fresh has joined, so good morning, Mr. Fresh.
Hello.
Hello there. So we will begin. I'll just set a little bit of context. So you'll recall that we were presented with the report on March 4th at the regular public meeting on the current fiscal year '21 third quarter budget. So this is now our work session to have any questions and conversations about it. Please do just keep in mind, information at this time should not be used to make assumptions or decisions about what lies ahead for finalizing the fiscal year '22 budget that we're developing. So there's much information in the budget process that is still being determined, primarily from outside bodies, including the Fairfax Board of Supervisors, the Virginia State General Assembly, and the governor, and the federal government. So in particular, at the federal level, two new allocations of federal funding are pending for dispersment and budgeting. So as such, it's really premature to view this third quarter discussion today as a starting point for balancing the new fiscal year '22 budget that we're developing. So as for questions and timing and such, each member has up to three minutes for a first turn. Second turn will be two minutes. And after a second round, if questions remain, we'll take a poll of the board on how we want to continue with questions. And just a reminder that rather than next steps, the members can ask for or submit budget questions to staff that are most essential for board-related budget work. So thank you to our clerks for keeping count on the time. And I will turn it over to Ms. Lee Burden, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance, to walk us through the few attachments that were posted in board docs, and then we'll go from there. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, this work session, as you said, is just an opportunity to ask questions about the third quarter review. You know, just briefly, we're basically recommending two changes to the fiscal '21 budget at third quarter, totaling $8.7 million. One item is staffing reserve savings at 150.9 positions, resulting from lower enrollment than projected. And those position savings are valued at $5.7 million. Then we also are expecting healthcare savings that were revealed by open enrollment. We had changes to planned participation, and that's $2.9 million. And so those two items together, again, total $8.7 million. And staff is recommending that that $8.7 million be allocated to increase the budgeted beginning balance for fiscal '22. And so that results in a budgeted beginning balance of $25.6 million. The rest of the third quarter package is essentially no changes, except for where we have received grant awards since mid-year. And so we're recognizing those in those specific funds. But other than that, there aren't any other changes.
Okay, is that it? Short and sweet? Great. And now my printer is running and making noise. So folks, colleagues, if you have some questions, please go ahead and raise your hands. Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I don't actually have any questions. I just want to thank Ms. Burden for her excellent work in this area as and the Chair and Vice Chair of Budget. I think the recommendation that you have put forth to take the third quarter carryover and put it in our startup costs for the next fiscal year is the responsible thing to do, given the challenging budget year we know we will be facing. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Tolan.
Yes, hi. A couple of quick questions. And I think these may have been asked at the board meeting. I just wanted to clarify. The staffing reserve number that we're looking at is that that is just due to attrition of staff over the year? And is this something I noticed you have a note in here that we'll be utilizing substitutes from February on? So I expect we may have some additional substitute costs. But is this a savings that we might expect in quarter four as well?
No. The staffing reserve is a reserve of 260 positions that is included in each annual budget to address class size that, you know, we didn't expect. And then they go over what the policy is on maximum class sizes. That, you know, there can be special ed and other unique situations where we need to allocate additional staff. And then, of course, you know, staffing standards. If somebody enrollment changes, and so then the staffing standards would allocate them additional staffing standard, then we have to have a reserve to go to to be able to allocate those funds to them. But this year, we did not use, you know, quite a few of the staffing reserve that we normally do. Normally, at this point in time, we have very little staffing reserve left because we've allocated all of it. Because, you know, we can project enrollment, but it's all about the distribution. It's school by school. And we have a very complicated and elaborate process where the regions meet with HR several times throughout the summer and the fall to make decisions about staffing reserve. But with the pandemic, that didn't, you know, that didn't happen this year. And so as a result, we do have, you know, a significant number of about 151 positions in the staffing reserve that were not used. And this late in the year, we wouldn't hire a new teacher anyway. We would just go ahead and use the sub to address that. And so these are truly savings that can be allocated towards something else.
Okay, got it. Thank you. One other question. I know that we've seen reduced revenue, of course, for our adults and community education program. And I noted, you know, in the sheets that is dealing specifically with them, that we did already do a transfer out of 1.2 million. I guess our operating funds to support them, if I was reading that correctly. Will they need additional support beyond that? Do we know?
Yes, they will likely need additional support, which we will address at year-end. The 1.2 million that you see is a budgeted supplement from the operating fund, based on, you know, an audit that the OAG did, where one of their recommendations was that we supplement that program. And then I think there is a local match required for classes for English learners. And so that's a, that's that, the part that you saw is a budgeted supplement. But, you know, that program, as well as others, relies on things. And so, you know, with this being a very different year, we are expecting to have to supplement them further this year. And that recommendation will come to you all at year-end.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. That's, those are my questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan and Ms. Burden. Dr. Anderson, I'm sorry, she lowered her hand. Ms. Bukarski.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burden. Just quickly, a couple of questions. Can you talk about what the $2 million for anticipated payments to Inova for vaccines is? I was under the impression that that was supposed to be covered in some way.
Well, the actual cost of the vaccine itself, it is covered. You know, there's no cost attached to it. It's provided by the federal government. But the cost of administering that vaccine is a cost that Inova and other healthcare providers are incurring. And so my understanding is the agreement with Inova is that we would pay them $46 per vaccine. And so we have set aside $2 million in the healthcare fund in order to pay for that. I think Ms. Corbett Sanders, the last time, asked a question about whether that would be eligible to come from some of the federal funds. And we do believe that that would be an allowable usage. But we have so many needs that we're going to have to address with the next two tranches of funds. You know, summer school, learning loss, social, emotional. You know, HVAC, air quality, all of those things that it made sense to us to go ahead and charge that to the healthcare fund. Because it's really no different than, you know, we're self-funded, which are self-insured. And so that means basically that air premiums pay for the claims. And this is just another claim.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I didn't recall that.
Excuse me. I just wanted to mention that it was on page five of the documents, if anyone's looking for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Could you also talk a little bit about the beginning balance? I agree with allocating the $8 million to shore that up a little bit. But there's been great variance, I guess, over the last five to seven years. But can you just talk a little bit about that? And what, you know, what is, I would say, a best practice or a good standard for a school system to maintain from year to year?
Well, actually, it's, it's not been, you know, varied that greatly over the last four or five years. Fiscal '19, it was 24.2 million. In fiscal '20, it was 25 and a half, 21, 24.4. Fiscal '22 is lower, which is one of the reasons why, of course, we recommended that this be allocated to that. Because that would bring the fiscal '22 back up to about 25 and a half million. And so that would put it in the range of the others. Generally speaking, if you look at the beginning balances of other school divisions, they range from 1% to 1.5% of their total budget. And I think at 25.6 million, ours will be at 0.8% of our total budget. So we're kind of right there in where everybody else is. You know, K-12 is very labor-intensive, with 90%, almost 90% of our budget being salaries and benefits. And anytime you have a labor-intensive industry, you are going to have funds that are going to fall out at the end of the year as a result of laps and turnover. You know, we try to predict what laps and turnover will be, and we include a negative number in our budget to account for that. But obviously, you wouldn't want to cut it too close. And so we are always going to have funds, a very small amount of funds, fall out at the end of the year that would be dedicated to the beginning balance.
Okay, thank you. I guess I was looking at the numbers a little bit further back. 65, you know, I think the other one, 44. And, you know, they've continued to steady for the last four years, but still continued to drop. So.
Yeah, and that was, that was a concerted effort on my predecessor's part. Felt like that having a beginning balance of, you know, 2% or 3% was too high, and that we really needed to get better at, you know, projecting what, what might not be needed due to laps and turnover in our budget. So as we've gotten better at predicting that, we've been able to reduce that beginning balance need at the same time. So yeah, you are correct in that.
That makes sense. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Ms. Bukarski. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you so much. I had to step away for a little bit, so I hope that I'm not asking redundant questions. If I am, please stop me. I did appreciate hearing the end of the questions that Ms. Bukarski asked regarding the beginning balance. I had a very similar inquiry. And I'm very appreciative of the recommendation to add this $8 million to the beginning balance, because we do know we had some concerns there at the start of the year. My questions are on page five, the school health and flexible benefits funding. You shared that there was a, there was an increase this year. Do we have any idea of what we expect for the fourth quarter in this area? Is this going to be, is this going to continue? Because I know I heard also the tail end of the vaccine discussion, but we continue to administer vaccines. How are we going to offset that? Are we also expecting some subsidies and rebates for that continuing work?
Well, when we, you know, have projected that we're going to have 2.9 million savings in healthcare, we've projected that through the end of the year. So, you know, there, there certainly, again, as Ms. Corbett Sanders pointed out last, last time, there will be, you know, we're expecting some savings in fiscal '22 as well. And, you know, that will be discussed in much further detail during reconciliation. So is that, what was your other question?
No, I think that answers it. Because if it's what was the expectation through the end of the year, that satisfies my question. I thought it was just for up until this report.
Yes, to the end of the year.
Okay, no, thank you so much. Gated.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I have a number of questions. First, I do want to say to Ms. Bukarski's question, you're correct. We used to carry a much larger beginning balance. But what was noted in terms of going through the recession was that since we are not the funding authority, that is, the Board of Supervisors, a best practice of having 40 to 60 million, or, yeah, $60 million reserve was not necessarily essential. And so that's why you see such a drop in beginning balance to where our more current practices are. Secondly, I will say to my colleagues, I do not support taking the $2 million and for the vaccine costs and pushing them over into the healthcare fund. If we're going to have up to $3 million in healthcare saving costs, I know that the Board of Supervisors are using those savings to look at one-time bonuses for their employees. That being one of the areas that they had cost savings for this fiscal year. So given that we've received well over $84 million in CARES funding and more to come, more importantly, that $2 million vaccine cost should be going to the one-time funding. So I hope we will keep a very open mind and not necessarily put that over into the column of the healthcare fund. The other thing is that I continue to have concerns that when you look at the Board of Supervisors, that they are using savings in third quarter to talk about bonuses for employees. I would like to see our superintendent and staff talking to us about how we're going to start preparing for how we do our best with our budget to not fall behind to where the county is going to look at doing things for their employees. I would also say that it would be important in looking at where, where is the rest of our CARES funds being directed? I know Ms. Burden said it's all, she noted that it's all sort of being earmarked already. And yet, this board hasn't had a public discussion with each other and the superintendent in terms of, more recently, where all this money is being allocated. So I would absolutely ask Ms. Maron that you and Ms. Darnett Kofax work with the Chair and Vice Chair, that we can get a work session on our CARES funding set up. Most likely, if it's going to take too long to get this last tranche of funds from the federal government as part of it, then let's see where we are to date. Because I think we'd need to be able to speak to it. Overall, I remain very concerned about our food nutritional services. So please put me on a go-back, because I would like to speak to that issue before we conclude today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to have a first question? I have first round of questions. I do have myself like to go.
Ms. Maron, respectfully, I would appreciate hearing from Ms. Burden.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. I, no, no, no. I didn't, I wanted to make sure that Ms. Burden or Dr. Braybrand spoke through that I expressed concerns about, especially with the healthcare.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Burden, please, or other staff. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin, I'm sorry. I didn't hear a question in there. What?
Yeah, the question I asked Ms. Burden is, what are you and Dr. Braybrand and the team doing to help prepare this board on one-time bonuses? And please respond to my questioning of why you think it's best that we take the $2 million and place that cost into the healthcare funds versus my suggestion that we absolutely use the more than $84 million in CARES Act funds? I'd like to have your perspective on why you don't think we can absorb that cost, since it is a COVID-related cost.
Well, as far as the county bonuses go, you know, we've included a 3% salary increase in our budget, the advertised budget currently, whereas the county has not included a salary increase in their budget. So the compensation piece, whether it be bonuses or salary increases, is still a conversation that we'll have to have. But right now is, is, you know, until all of the funding sources are determined, that's not, now's not the time to do it. As far as the $2 million in the healthcare fund, it is, it is a cost of healthcare. And so is appropriately allocated to that fund, which is funded by premiums from employees and the employer. It's a claim. And that is how it will come into the school division as a claim against healthcare. And we believe that it would, should rightfully be charged to the health insurance fund, which is self-insured.
So Ms. Burden, I'd ask the question, what preparations are you making? I'm, I totally appreciate, Ms. Maron. I just, when I ask the questions and raise the concerns, I'm, I am worried that staff aren't answering it. So, Ms. Burden, I specifically said my concern is that we have to position the board to be prepared on what we're going to do when we already know from the signal of the county executive that getting enough funds for the 3% raise is highly unlikely. So what are you doing to position us between now and May for contingency plan?
So. Thank, thank you, Ms. Maron. Thank you for recognizing me. If I can answer, so we are working very closely with the county. And I think that the county is in a position, as the funder, to be able to make decisions about third quarter for their employees. And we're currently in the stance of waiting for our funders to share with us how they'll be funding us moving forward. And so we are fully prepared to bring a plan forward to the board with regard to our ESTR dollars and how we might utilize those ESTR dollars as part of the overall budget process. We just feel that at this time, we want to make sure that we give our funders time to provide resources for us as we think about how we might use our resources moving forward. And again, we are working to provide that information for the board and are prepared to do so, and are working with the Chair of the Budget Committee and the Board Chair to bring that information to the board as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. I also have a follow-up question or two, Ms. McLaughlin, that might add more information. So I'll wait my turn. Okay, next we have Ms. Cohen, followed by Ms. Seismar Heizer.
Um, I, much of what I had written down has been asked, but, and I don't want to belabor the point, but, you know, I'm hopeful that we can, as Ms. Burden said, submit those and continue to. I was just wondering, with the vaccination, are we, where are we in that process? Is that, I recognize you said till the end of January 1. But I had a sense that we were pretty much done in terms of vaccinating staff. Could somebody just give us a quick update on that, even though this is not technically part of this?
Yes, please. Mr. Smith?
So I can give an update, and we'll be talking a little bit more in that in our RTS presentation about vaccinations. But we feel confident that those employees who wanted to receive that first dose, and we have many who have received their second dose, but we feel confident that those who've wanted it have been able to get it. We're, there are one-offs, and of course, we're working with those individuals who reach out, whose situations have changed. Information from their doctors may have precluded them from getting the vaccination earlier. So we are working with the Health Department and Inova daily, and are actually having some calls as we speak with Inova on some guidance that may be changing this afternoon. So we will be updating the entire Fairfax County community on those first doses for those who haven't gotten them, and will certainly provide more information for individuals with the second. In terms of us being charged, so it's a process. We're setting aside that $2 million, anticipating that we will be charged by Inova for these doses. Again, it's the amount that they were able to charge based on federal guidance. This isn't an Inova-initiated cost. But again, it's because of what the federal government allowed providers to charge for these inoculations. And so in anticipation of that, we're anticipating $2 million. It may be less than that. I know that Inova could be looking at providing those doses for their individuals who are part of their health plan at no cost to us. But we don't know that at this time. But we feel confident that those individuals who have wanted a vaccination have gotten it. And if they haven't, we are working one-on-one with them and shepherding them through the process.
Awesome. So we don't anticipate that this is going to be an additional, like, massive fourth quarter expenditure? We feel fairly confident that most of that money has happened in the third quarter?
Yes, very confident, very confident.
And the last thing that I was asked, I guess, both of you. But, you know, going into fourth quarter, which is a fourth quarter, unlike our normal fourth quarter, is there anything that you anticipate, maybe it's lessons learned from last time's fourth quarter, which I know was just markedly different than other years? Are there any fourth quarter expenditures that you foresee that are a bit wonky, like, outside of our normal fourth quarter spending?
No. I mean, you know, we still have a good bit of CARES funds. You know, we have plenty of PPE in the warehouse and also in the schools. We, you know, completely, you know, replenish the CRF funds that we got from the state of $32 million, the CRF funds we got from the county. That largely funded cameras, laptops, those sorts of things. But we do have a good bit of intervention funds left. And those funds, you know, will be carried over and used in next year. Or, you know, some of them may be used this year to provide additional assistance to students. to provide additional assistance to students. But no, I don't, I mean, in fourth quarter, I don't see anything out of the ordinary of what we've already experienced, except for that, you know, as we get closer to the end of the year, we'll know more about where we're going to land.
Mr. Smith, did you want to add something?
Yes, and I would also add that while we are, and I'm waiting for my camera to come in, while we still have intervention funds remaining, want to share with the board and the community that we are actively engaged in interventions with students, and so we are tapping into those dollars. But we do anticipate that there will be funds remaining. I wouldn't want folks to think that we aren't using those dollars to support students in their needs.
Just to follow up on that, I was going to ask specifically, I know that we are likely to invest significantly more in recovery services than we normally do for our kids who access special ed services. Do you have any sense of what that will look like from a fiscal perspective?
So I would ask Dr. Boyd to join the call to talk about some of the plans that we have moving forward for targeted supports for students. And we've been having lots of conversations about targeted supports, not only for our students with special needs, but again, for students with second language needs. So I'd like to bring her into the conversation with some plans for a number of students and how we might use funds moving forward.
Thank you, Marty, and good afternoon. We earmarked approximately $6 million for our recovery services for this year. We know that some of those recovery services will take place during the summer, but we also know that some of our students who would qualify for extended school year services might also qualify for recovery services. And so we do have flexibility for those recovery services to be provided at a time that is mutually agreeable to the family and to the school, also recognizing that many of our families with our community transmission getting better want to have that opportunity to just reconnect and engage. And so we earmarked that amount of money, but, you know, being recovery services is new, we don't have a baseline from which to draw. So we really had to use some theoretical information with that, but we are monitoring IEPs as they're developed and work closely with our Budget Office on updates are needed.
Thanks so much. And the last, everybody's using their crystal balls, I appreciate it. But I, the last question I wanted to ask, Lee, I know Ms. Corbett-Sanders and I were fortunate enough to be on a call with Congressman Connolly, who mentioned his guess of what Fairfax County Public Schools would get from the latest. Do you guys have any new and updated information and how might that inform kind of how you tweak where third quarter, our leftovers from third quarter go?
We do have amounts, again, as you said, that we've received from various federal legislatures, but, you know, I really consider those to be estimates until we get final allocations from VDOE, and we have not received notification from VDOE yet.
Okay, thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ms. Cohen. Next we have Ms. Seismarheiser, followed by Ms.
Great, thank you. And again, some of my questions have already been asked, so I'll just have a couple additional questions to what's been asked. And the first question I have is when you look at the budget report on page eight, when we're looking at, sorry, I apologize, not page eight, page six, I apologize, there's a capital cost for TJ tuition of $800,000. Can someone explain to me what that capital cost is? Is that a recurring fund cost? Is that something new? I'm just kind of curious about that.
I'm not seeing where you are.
You know, I'm sorry, seven, page seven, I'm sorry, my page numbers all messed up. On page seven, in the third quarter budget review under receipts, it's under the school construction fund statement, there's a TJ tuition capital cost of $800,000.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly what that is, except for that it is some kind of construction cost for TJ.
Yeah, it just kind of caught my attention because I didn't know how tuition could be a capital cost, and so I was just curious what that was.
Yeah, you're right, it's receipts. Mr. Smith, yeah.
So we can ask Mr. Plattenberg to join us, but we all, we know that when we built TJ, when we renovated TJ, we built some of those construction costs into the tuition for our neighboring school divisions. And so in terms of receipts, we do receive additional monies from those neighboring school divisions to cover the overall cost of the construction. So that's where you see those dollars being recognized.
Okay, and one other question on the same page, under facility modifications, I'm assuming those are modifications that aren't related to, you know, changes needed due to COVID, such as HVAC systems or this and that? Are those just regular modifications, or does that include COVID-related modifications?
No, COVID, we don't have any COVID-related expenditures in the school construction fund. Those would come out of, you know, ESAR funds, the CARES funds, and, which is a grant. So no, that wouldn't be in the construction kind. That's just general variety facility modifications.
You know, I understand if it's COVID-related, I just wanted to see, make sure that, I know we did a lot of work earlier this year on HVAC and other systems to make sure that, and even the review of them, so I wanted to make sure that wasn't captured in here, but was more related to the ESAR funds. So that was my question on that one. And then the other question I had is, in terms of, and this is sort of picking up what Ms. Cohen said about additional needs for the fourth quarter, in my visits to classrooms, a couple of things that I've noticed is some talking about potential bandwidth issues, which makes it difficult for students in person and students who are remaining virtual to be able to connect, to chat with each other, to collaborate on projects, as well as some classes have students who are projected on a screen, the ones that are virtual, to help the students who are in person and students virtual stay connected. And I am concerned about sort of are students getting further fractured with this sort of two days a week in person, hybrid, remaining virtual? So are there technology expenditures that we may be spending from now to the end of the year that would be under this fund as opposed to ESAR funds that we have planned or thought about to help with some of these concerns as our students are being phased into the classroom?
I don't, I don't know about fourth quarter. I know that we have spent a good deal, we did spend a good deal of the federal CRF funds and the county CRF funds on technology for, you know, laptop, web conferencing, MiFi devices, bandwidth, classroom cameras, those sorts of things. So as far as I know, that there are not additional expenditures slated for this last three months of the year, but certainly Mr. Sethi or Mr. Smith have, you know, have a better handle on that.
And if I may, so we are in the process of making those bandwidth upgrades to schools, and so we ask that if any teachers or schools are experiencing that, to certainly reach out to the Department of Information Technology so that we can work within the, with those schools. We also know that with our dollars and funds that have been allocated for upgrades in classrooms, we are still receiving technology based on some of those early orders. And so we also ask patients as we receive those orders and work to outfit those classrooms to let our staff know that we are actively engaged in getting them up and running so that they can meet the needs of their students, both who are attending in person and attending at home. So it's, schools are receiving boxes every day, and our teams are working to get that technology in place every day to support students. But again, if there are bandwidth issues, we're also in the process of that upgrade, and so to help us know where those brown spots are throughout the county in terms of the brownout for bandwidth, we can certainly work with those schools.
Great, I appreciate that because I've heard that from several schools. And, you know, I know there's a balance of not wanting our in-person students on their laptops the whole time, which is why I like the projecting the students on a screen or projecting the chat on a screen. But I would just encourage you, Mr. Smith, and your team as you're working with, and I know the back order, so I appreciate you bringing that up in terms of some of the technology being backordered, the frustration, but encourage you to look at the student experience, ads are being phased in, to make sure we can maintain those student connections, especially with that alphabet split and things like that. So whatever technology we have, I'd encourage you to look at it from that lens and see how we can enhance that experience.
Thank you, you're exactly right. The student experience is key here, and ensuring that we reach out to students and have those conversations about that experience will only make, help us meet their needs even better, but thank you for that.
Yeah, just keeping them connected wherever they're learning, whether it's in person or virtual, and I think, you know, really looking at our technology needs and, you know, some of this reserve or whatever it is to make sure that we have that to keep them connected so we start strong next year. So that's my time very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Ms. Seismarheiser. We have Mr. Fresh, and then I believe that's the last one for the first round currently. Thank you. Let's just, we can't hear you, Mr. Fresh.
Of course, I apologize. I'll keep it short since most of my questions were already asked and I've already used time speaking into the void. So we've seen plenty of evidence nationally, data and locally, that the pandemic has disproportionately impacted negatively the Hispanic community in particular. We're seeing this bear out in our attendance and grade data as well. What are we doing with funding for our recovery services to specifically target this community for supports?
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you from a budget perspective that, you know, we provided intervention and support funding from the CARES grant that totaled 4.8 million. We also provided some remediation funds for a compensatory cost of 2.9 million. But Ms., Dr. Boyd would, has her hand up, and so I think she wants to, she can jump in.
Thank you, Ms. Burden, and I just wanted to share that while Ms. Burden shared the financial piece and we talked a little bit about that earlier, our recovery services for our students with disabilities, whose IEPs teams determine that that's appropriate, that's really going to look unique based on what those students' needs are. So it could be services related to comprehension, it could be services related to executive functioning, it's really based on the students' individualized needs. And we do have, again, some plans to have those services being made available during this summer while we run our extended school year programs, but we also have some of those recovery services happening now and understand that we'll probably need to have some of those services available specific to the student's need our next school year as well.
So beyond recovery services for students with IEPs, we still see these indicators with our Hispanic students. Are we making investments in anything like translation services to enhance our abilities there or anything else that we could see as specifically targeting this community for support?
Go ahead, Marty, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was going to say that, yes, we're certainly looking at some of those supports, and as we bring back information about how we're going to definitively spend, definitively spend, but that's a hard thing to say.
Yeah, right.
Definitively spend our ESAR dollars, you'll see that we have some supports built in there.
And I know Lee alluded last night in a budget conversation to a more fully detailed expenditure plan, so I know we're eager to see that. And I hope that this will be one of our front-of-mind communities when we're thinking through these expenditures. So I didn't want to get too into what programming would be offered, I was just curious about the instruments since we're talking about the budget currently. So thanks all, appreciate it.
Mr. Fresh? Okay, I believe everyone waiting to speak is looking for a second turn. Anyone else for a first turn? I will, I will go ahead and ask my own questions as a first turn, and then we'll proceed with the, with the second round. So to follow up on the vaccine costs, we're on page five. So Ms. Burden, they're in the school health fund, and I'm wondering if that's because the Budget Office is thinking that this is going to be a recurring cost? Can you grant any insight on whether this is being thought of as a recurring cost? Because just like the flu shot, it seems like we're going to have to give out COVID shots each year, but who knows, maybe that will start to be covered under insurance like our flu shots are. Can you?
Yeah, you know, my crystal ball is not working when it comes to COVID and the future. So I am not going to speculate on whether we will all be receiving COVID vaccines for the rest of our lives. But for now, it is a healthcare cost that we are incurring, and so it is, you know, rightfully charged against the health insurance fund. We have had, we are expecting savings in the health insurance fund, so this $2 million claim does not, you know, we're not using the premium stabilization reserve that we maintain in the health fund to pay for this. We're using current premiums, and it's a claim against healthcare and rightfully should be charged to the health insurance fund.
Okay, thanks for the explanation. I mean, I do share some of the concern about, you know, is it a recurring cost or not? And does it benefit us to use it as the one-time cost under the federal funds if that doesn't take away from helping students, you know, with learning and returning to in person? I guess that's something I'm thinking of for the next, you know, our FY22 development, should we be holding some kind of, you know, bank like that, like a $2 million spaceholder in case we do have to have some kind of, you know, vaccination funding support? So that's just, maybe let's put a pin in that. And then I'll just say, you know, I too would like more detail about the CARES funding that we know we've budgeted out thus far, that's something that constituents have asked as well. So I'm eager to see that, I don't know if it's merited in a whole work session or what. I know our next FY22 budget development session is in May, I think, let me not misspeak. Well, it'll happen, but anyway, that is something I would like, please. So thank you. Okay, so second round of questions, I have in order here, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, followed by Ms. McLaughlin. Two minutes, please, thank you.
So I just wanted to give some clarity regarding the forthcoming American Relief Act funding. We are really in a holding pattern, as I understand it, because we are waiting for the federal regulations associated with the dispersment of those funds to be released. And what I'm hearing is that it won't be available until the beginning of April. So I'd like some clarity on that. Secondly, in response to Mr. Fresh's comment regarding the importance of addressing the needs of our most vulnerable students, it's my understanding that much of the American Relief Act funding for schools, the formula was actually focused on Title I students. And that's why we got significant, we are slated to get significantly more money than our neighboring district in Loudon. And so if somebody can give us a little bit of clarity on that. And finally, regarding recurring costs associated with COVID, on the American Relief Act, I thought I read that unlike the previous CARES Act, which had a very short period of time for expending those funds, that we have some flexibility there. And finally, would love to hear, and it might be for this afternoon or at a later date, but it's my understanding that many of the questions that people are asking about broadband and summer programming, that the American Relief Act does provide some of that, but that we really are waiting for those regulations. Is that correct?
Well, yes and no. Well, yes and no. We have not yet received VDOE's interpretation, but of course, you know, we're able to pull up the federal legislation and see what it says. We do believe that the application deadline will be later, that we'll have until September 30 of 2023 or 2024. 20% has to be spent on instruction. The application deadline, those kinds of things are currently unknown. Again, we're waiting on VDOE to provide guidance on that and final allocations. The allowable usage looks to be, you know, similar but a little broader, looking at the federal legislation. But, you know, essentially the same sort of funding requirements that we've seen with the other tranches of funds.
So based on that, Ms. Marin, I would appreciate you as budget chair, if you could schedule at a later date, a period of time where we can get a deeper dive on these funds to include the CARES Act, which we've already gone through that period in the American Relief Act, and give staff the grace to be able to dig through that prior to us having that discussion.
Thank you. Dr. Brabran, did you want to add?
Everything Ms. Burden said, and I did get clarification from the state superintendent that S or F will be through September 2024, and we should be hearing very soon from VDOE about the specific school amounts. So it's coming soon and we'll have till September 2024, which is nice. That gives us that more multi-year approach to some of this money because we really know the pandemic is more than just a one-year event in terms of its impact on our kids. So that is good news and we'll have more to share and as we get it, we'll certainly share it with you all and the community.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's really important to have this really clear for the community especially. Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, followed by, one second here, Ms. Tolan.
Okay, thank you. I really feel the need to push on this healthcare situation. Dr. Brabran and Ms. Burden, it's my understanding that our employees pay 15% to 20% of the cost of their premiums and coverage for healthcare. So again, I think it's wholly inappropriate that we're going to drain out $2 million in the cost savings from the healthcare fund of which employees pay into, of which employees have seen their premiums go up, because we're unwilling to use $2 million in well over the existing 84 million we've gotten in ESAR funds. So unless you're going to tell me something differently, colleagues, I want to just put the marker on the table. I want to work with anybody who's interested. I'm going to propose in the third quarter review that we do not approve the superintendent's recommendation on the $2 million going against the healthcare fund. This is not the employee's fault that they are needing to be vaccinated. This is a COVID one-time event and that's where I think the fund should be used. So I know I'm limited in time, so I welcome staff to talk at the end of my two minutes on that one. Secondly, I am concerned about food nutritional services. Dr. Brabran, I don't know if you're hearing from your principals, but I'm hearing from families. The quality of the food being served in our schools right now, the food portions that are so tiny for our students, the combination of those two have me very worried about what is going on. And I know we're making it free to everyone, but part of the problem that families are coming back to me and saying is, by making it free to everyone, when we normally subsidize it by 50% of the paying students, and as a result, when you look at the menu itself, which is all posted online, but what's reporting back to me, these kids are hungry and it's not meeting the needs of our kids. So I would like to hear from our FNS director. And I also had said during the business meeting that I wanted to understand where we are in our deficits for FNS, and I haven't heard anything right now on that. So those are my questions.
Ms. Burden, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Burden, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, we're certainly aware of the problem or challenge that you just talked about. And we started to add in an extra sandwich daily as early as last week at middle and high schools to help with the need for larger portion sizes. But it will take a bit to get this going consistently and in large quantities at all sites because our food is ordered weeks in advance per the planned menu. And with changes, of course, we have to make sure that we have enough food. We're also hearing from the Food and Nutrition Service supervisors that there's more interest at the middle school and high school level of the potential for hot meals after spring break. And we're working with principals with that to be able to address social distancing and start that up. Also, middle school and high school students especially are used to à la carte snacks and beverages. And, you know, we're allowed to provide those for the normal fees and we hope to get that up and running soon. And that will help. So yes, the Food and Nutrition Services staff are aware of this concern and we are ramping up to provide greater portion sizes, options, and à la carte snacks and beverages. As far as the healthcare goes, again, it's, we're self-insured, which is the most efficient way to run a healthcare program because the premiums essentially cover the claims. We did ask the Director of Benefit Services to attend the meeting today in case there were more in-depth questions. So if Ms. Holly Brown would like to offer any insight, that would be great. It's inactive. So I don't know if Terry Kellogg is here.
Ms. Burden, it's fine. Don't take up, don't take up staff and board time on this one. I've heard the rationale. I respectfully deeply disagree. So I don't need any more explanation on why you think it's a healthcare cost, unless my colleagues want to hear it. But I think this is a different issue.
Well, Ms. Kellogg has turned on her microphone, so if she wants to add anything, that would be great.
Sure, I'm trying to, sorry, trying to share my video. We are seeing those claims actually come in now and assess toward the Health Fund. It is, as we indicated, a healthcare expense. It may be a recurring expense. We're still trying to see what holds down the pike, but we do have sufficient reserves to cover that. Our claims have been a little bit lower this year than anticipated. And so we do have funding to cover those vaccines.
And Ms. McLaughlin, I mean, I think it's important to note that not only do we think it's a cost of healthcare, but in addition to that, you know, the needs for the SR2 funds and the SRF funds, both for air quality, instruction, learning loss, social emotional issues. Although the funds that we've been allocated for SR2 and we hope to get with SRF are, you know, certainly significant, the cost that we are looking at, you know, again, air quality, instruction, those sorts of things, already exceed those significant amounts. So again, we certainly believe that the vaccines, the cost of vaccines would be an allowable use, but we're, you know, trying to keep the funds in SR2 and SR3 or F, you know, set aside for student-related expenditures.
Ms. Burden, since you noted that we have plenty of funds in your prior responses, I think there's going to need to be deeper details and conversation because I feel there's some contradictions in today's work session on our ESAR funds and I'm troubled by it. But I know my time is up and I'll follow up with an email to Dr. Brabran and the board. I do not like what I've heard today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin and staff. Next, we have Ms. Tolan followed by Ms. Zeismarheiser.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to just take a minute to look at, I'm at page 10, which is under Self-Supporting Programs, which includes summer school. And, you know, given our afternoon conversation, we'll be talking about, a little bit about summer and remediation activities that we're looking forward to. I just want to make sure I understand some of what's on this page. A couple of things I just wanted to note, I see under receipts, of course, we have tuition, you know, from summer school, I know it's during this fiscal year, you know, of $3.3 million. And so I'm a little curious as to, you know, what we might be thinking about doing this coming summer as far as tuition. But then I also wanted to understand under reserves, the summer school reserve line, which is, you know, approximately, you know, $4 million, 3.962. Is that money that we have available to us to utilize this coming summer as part of our summer program?
On January 27th, Dr. Presidio presented a draft plan for summer learning and I think that it totals about $30 million. What you see here, you know, reflects summer school from last summer, which is in fiscal '21. So yeah, we don't have any costs assumed for summer school, you know, this summer and summer of '21 included in this fund statement at all.
Right. So my question is though, can you just explain what summer school reserve is then?
I'm going to have to research that and get back with you unless I've got the comptroller Shaquille Youssef on with us and he may be able to explain that. Go ahead, Shaquille.
Yes, go ahead. Hi, this is Shaquille. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Typically, the way that the fund statement is presented, that represents the fund balance in the summer school fund. So it's considered a reserve because part of that may be used for future summer programs, but it's essentially the fund balance. And the way it's presented in the fund statement is as a reserve.
Okay, that's what I was hoping. So that 3.962 would be available to us this coming summer for summer program?
And actually, Ms. Tolan, I think Ms. Wiggington is, I see that she's on, she probably has a little bit more detail about that reserve and the source of the funds.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Shaquille and Ms. Burden. I really appreciate it. So Mr. Youssef did describe that pretty accurately. So Ms. Tolan, to directly answer your question, that would be available for any use for the upcoming summer in terms of what they want to do for their programming.
Okay, great. Thank, appreciate the explanation. That's my question. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Tolan, after her is Ms. Zeismarheiser followed by Dr. Anderson. Ms. Zeismarheiser, we can't hear you if you're there.
I apologize, I thought Ms. Tolan was ahead of me.
Yes, she's all done. She, that was her last question. So go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, so really, only a couple of things I have to add to what I said before. So it's really not much. But first, I would also support having more information on our use of ESAR funds and all of the COVID-related funds as well. I've gotten a lot of questions from constituents as well as to where that funding is going. So whether it's a work session or materials, I would support that as well. I just wanted to put that out there. And I just wanted to also ask a question about our staffing reserve and the savings we have in the staffing reserve. Is it possible to use that? I know I've had conversations with Dr. Brabran and other staff about keeping, holding harmless schools for staffing ratios based on enrollment and especially for some of our elective teachers and our secondary teachers, CTE and things like that. Is that something that we can use some of that staffing reserve for to hold, either to allow staffing at 2019, 2020 levels in terms of holding harmless or some other way? So if someone could ask, address that question, I'd appreciate it.
Well, for fiscal, the staffing reserve in the third quarter is the remaining staffing reserve in fiscal '21 that's not been used. In the fiscal '22 budget, we also would have 260 positions to be able to allocate for special needs, you know, enrollments, you know, distributions that's different than what we might have anticipated. Right now, the advertised budget is based on a flat enrollment projection. It's based on the enrollment projection for fiscal '21 because even though our enrollment is down, at the time we began developing the budget, we thought that there was a good chance that most students would return, that that shortfall was temporary. But, you know, again, that is something that we are, you know, we continue to look at and, you know, will be discussing in even greater detail in the coming months.
Thank you. I guess what I'm particularly trying to advocate for and is really holding harmless, some of our programming that's really based on student enrollment numbers at a, you know, and I'm thinking about our arts programming, our CTE program, where some of these programs often get cut because of that. And I'm just curious if some of the staffing reserve that we have listed on page one can be specifically earmarked for things like that. So that's just my advocacy for this year. So not just holding harmless enrollment projections, but also in particular types of programming that may be more disproportionately impacted by COVID and virtual learning. So that was the one question that I had on that piece of it, which isn't as much of a question there. And then I just wanted to say, Ms. Burden, I appreciate that you are moving so quickly on adjusting our food and, you know, especially our food portions. I know I emailed you all last week with the same concern that Ms. McLaughlin had about the quality of the food and the portions especially. So I appreciate that you've already started to make some adjustments on that. And I do think, you know, further adjustments would be very well warranted. So thank you.
Great, thanks, Ms. Zeismarheiser. Dr. Anderson, actually, would you mind if Ms. Taranekofax spoke first? She hasn't had a chance yet. So Ms. Taranekofax followed by Dr. Anderson, please.
Good morning. I just want to speak, I don't have a lot of questions, I just really want to speak to, listening to my colleagues, I always appreciate hearing things from different perspectives. So I, in my district, I have not had anyone reach out to me specifically about the lunch portions, but I appreciate my colleagues sharing that with me because that is a great concern. And Ms. Burden, it sounds like you are on that, but I would like a follow-up on that. Secondly, I do believe regarding the administering of the vaccines, I too see that as a cost of healthcare. And as our premiums are covering this, I feel that those funds could be used for other needs as we move forward. I do support my colleagues and I guess Ms. Marin, you and I can work together with the Chair and Vice-Chair. I think the funds are going to be significant and as such, I think we might need an additional work session on what that will be. So we'll see, you know, how we can manage that. But as for this portion of the, you know, what we're, we've touched upon a lot of different tangential items and I appreciate that as part of the conversation. But as far as what we need to do on Thursday night, I would support using the savings as outlined and adding them to the FY2022 beginning balance on Thursday when we vote on this. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks. Dr. Anderson?
Turning on my video here. Thank you. I am so sorry, Ms. Burden, but I am a little bit stuck on the vaccines. So if we could go back to that, I am trying to figure out what are the pros and cons of us not utilizing CARES funds for the vaccines. You know, I've said this in multiple work sessions and I've been very protective of the COVID-related funds to be used for COVID-related expenditures. I've not, I've been hesitant. I've not, I've been hesitant in terms of being creative to try to offset some other things with those funds. But this is a COVID-related expenditure, and I'm really struggling with seeing why we're not utilizing it, why we're not utilizing CARES funds for that. What are the pros and cons? I need for you to run that down for me because I don't think I have a full understanding of the benefits of having it in the healthcare benefits.
Yeah, it's just that, you know, we're being very, very protective of the additional ESER funds, both two and three, also called ESERF. You know, we know that there are going to be, you know, needs for summer school. That's, you know, already been presented to the board at about 30 million. We know that building air quality is something that the federal legislation is advocating for. And those, you know, trying to address those issues are very expensive. So we're just being as protective of the CARES funding as much as we can. So the Health Insurance Fund is, you know, I think it's about $500 million. It has a, you know, required premium stabilization reserve of about $100 million, $2 million as a claim against the Health Insurance Fund, although certainly that is a lot of money. It's not such a huge amount that the Health Insurance Fund can't handle it. And so we decided that it was a claim against healthcare and charged it there. It's, we do believe it's an allowable usage and, you know, perhaps, you know, we'll make a different decision. But for now, every dollar that we have or that we think we're going to get in ESER II and ESER III, we have to be protective of because we, there is so much uncertainty. I don't know if, you know, we have plenty of PPE right now. We have plenty in the schools, plenty in the warehouse. But I don't know, are we going to be using hand sanitizer and wearing masks, you know, for the next two years? If so, then we need to be as protective as we can of these additional funds and ensure that they, you know, go to assist with students and having school five days a week.
Sure. And I think we could make an argument that vaccination supports those efforts. So that would be a direct and appropriate use of those COVID-related funds. My other question is, is there a disadvantage to employees who contribute to this fund by using this for the vaccines in lieu of COVID-related funding, CARES, ESER, any of those? What is the disadvantage to our employees, if there is one?
Well, they'll share in the cost of it, but, you know, I think we have, I would need to talk to Ms. Holly Brown. I'm not sure what the industry calls belly buttons, how many people that we actually, employees plus dependents and spouses, is what the industry refers to, the actual number of people that the fund serves. But, you know, you could do a quick division of 2 million divided by that number and come up with a cost.
Oh, Mr. Smith, did you want to add anything to that question?
Oh, I was only going to ask Ms. Holly Brown to weigh, and she may have connection now, to talk about how that cost is shared by employees and by the system, and whether or not we would see an increase in our premiums next year because of this additional 2 million.
Ms. Brown? I see her mic, but I do not hear her.
Ms. Brown, are you speaking? We can't hear you or see you.
This is Terry Keller. I think she's having technology challenges with her mic. So she may chime in in just a minute.
While we wait for her to speak, I'll go to my second point, and then hopefully she will catch up and we will come back to that. I'm glad that somebody raised this issue of hot lunches. I was not going to raise it in this conversation, but rather in the next discussion that we're going to have with return to school. I am hearing from my community not just about the portions being insufficient for our students, but also clamoring for a return to hot meals. And so if somebody could speak to that possibility, and I apologize if this was already answered, I missed it. I missed the section of this meeting for some weird reason. That wasn't all my time, right? I spent a lot of that in waiting.
Yeah, Ms. Peron may want to speak to this further, but I can tell you that currently 24 schools plan to offer hot lunches by April the 6th, and additional schools are currently reviewing the hot lunch service model with their finance, I mean, not finance, but food service area supervisors.
You said that was April the 5th?
April 6th.
April 6th. I'm sorry, Ms. Marion, may I continue? Because I'm not sure if my time was spent waiting for Ms. Brown's microphone.
Sure. Or Ms. Madeha, can you confirm? I mean, I think it's...
Yes, we did stop the clock when we were waiting for confirmation, but I can add another minute. Does that work?
No, no need to do anything special for me. I'm happy to go to, if there is an additional turn, I would like that, but I would still like to have my questions answered by Ms. Brown if she is available. But I do want to finish my advocacy on the food issue. So I would like to be added for a third turn if that is allowed.
Okay, so Ms. Brown, are you now available?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Excellent. My apologies. Technology is not my friend this morning. So I wanted to ask, answer first the belly button question. We have just over 61,000 lives that are covered in the program currently for medical. There is a portion of which that participate in Kaiser. And from a headcount perspective for employees, that's just under 4,000 employees that are covered under Kaiser. Kaiser is offering the vaccination process as well there. So those costs are actually embedded in the premium costs, and those are fully insured. As far as the remainder of the cost, and we're getting charges in through Enova and some other sources for vaccine administration, and also routing through Blue Cross, and those are actually coming in through the portals currently in the health plans. We do have a cost sharing program in our health programs, which I believe Ms. McLaughlin had identified before, that is anywhere from 75% to 85% that the system funds and the employees' funds, the remainder, 15% to 25% in the program. So it's accurate to identify that there is some cost to the employee when we're talking about funds.
Thank you. I will complete my comments on another turn, Ms. Marion.
Great, thank you. I did propose at the outset that if we were going to have a third round, that we just check in with the board. We have two members who would like to ask the third question. If anybody objects to that, can you raise your hand? And I doubt our two waiting speakers object. So, and if you could keep the third round at two minutes, that'd be great. Okay, great. Let's go ahead. Thank you. Let's go ahead and have the third round. So Ms. McLaughlin, I believe you had your hand up, and then Dr. Anderson. And then that will be our...
Thank you. Yes, going back to the issue on food nutritional services, I had said at the last business meeting that I have an outstanding request from months ago from the superintendent and the chief financial officer, that they were going to bring back information about the surrounding jurisdictions, in particular Loudon and Prince William, on what is the status of their food nutritional services reserve funding and overall what their operating funds had been. Because as was reported to this board, Fairfax County Public Schools spent all of its reserves and needed an additional $10 million in general operating funds to augment food nutritional services costs during COVID. And now, as we're hearing, the portions and the food quality have been a concern. So I would like to, again, understand, staff was supposed to go and find out how come Loudon and Prince William did not have these financial problems that we have, and what are we now going to do about this for our food nutritional service fund. But I do want to note, while we might be adding an extra sandwich, that's for students who can eat meat. But our current offerings for vegetarians is a single hard-boiled egg and string cheese along with a pretzel, or it's been a yogurt biteable. And either way, that, as anyone listening can know, that for middle school and high school kids, that's not enough calories. So I would like to also make sure staff reports to us, what are you doing for the vegetarian students to provide additional food? And I do think there's just, we're not getting enough information for why we're looking at food only to come in hot for 24 schools after we get back from spring break. Why are we not having all 200 schools bringing on board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to let Ms. Peron, the Director of Food and Nutrition Services, speak to the vegetarian meals and the other issues that Ms. McLaughlin brings up.
Hi, this is Maria with Food Services. You know, all of the meals that we serve meet the meal pattern for portion sizes. And the current program that we're running right now for breakfast and lunches is very similar to the National School Lunch Program. You know, we remained really focused on controlling costs in terms of looking at our food and looking at our staff. We have, as students have come back, we have heard that, hey, you know, we want you all to look at the portion size and what's being offered. And our goal is to, you know, transition as many schools as we can over to hot meals versus the cold grab and go, because, you know, that's a preference, and there's definitely perception with the two different offerings. And so as we're serving as many as 70,000, 80,000 breakfast, lunch, supper, and snacks a day to the community, we're also trying to, you know, phase in, you know, how we can support schools as the kids have come back and things start to stabilize at those locations. And we start to really understand how many students are going to eat so that we can order, you know, the correct amount of food and prepare the amount, you know, based on that information. So we are, you know, looking at this. We're taking it very seriously. We're working really hard every day to try and get schools up and running with the hot meals. And it will just take us a little bit of time to, you know, incorporate all those things while we're, you know, looking to not compromise the amount of meals that we're serving every day to the community because that's a big part, the revenue that we're trying to generate right now, assisting our fund.
Yeah, if I could just add, do I think a nugget here for our community? We've run a massive grab and go operation in our community. It's been more cold food, right? And now we're back in hybrid. We're trying to live in two worlds, the in-person, where the demand for the hot meal, and what we've done during the pandemic, which is that grab and go. So Maria's team really has gone above and beyond, and I am confident that she'll work with our principals and with her FNS staff to be able to transition as soon as we can to hot. But we've got our staff stretched trying to provide our current grab and go meal process as well as beginning to do the in-person process where the demand for hot meals is certainly a priority. And we understand that. But I just want to provide that context. We're setting up right now, we're in the middle of servicing, just like we are with concurrent instruction, a concurrent meal distribution pattern. And that is part of the challenge.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Anderson will be our last speaker. And staff, please do turn on your cameras unless you have a technical issue because it does help make our meetings more interactive. Thank you.
Ms. Marion, I'm sorry. I've now asked twice in this session, plus the business meeting, so that's now three times. I'm still not hearing from staff what is going on with our fund, FNS, for our reserves and our financial challenges compared to Loudon and Prince William. I really would appreciate at minimum a status update, Dr. Braybrand.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the bottom line is, they had two to three times the reserve that we did. And I know Ms. Burden has done that information, and we can supply it to the board in a Braybrand briefing.
Yeah. And I mean, Ms. McLaughlin, the answer to your budget question, I signed off on last week. So I thought that that had been posted. But you are, Dr. Braybrand is correct. Loudon and Prince William certainly had far larger fund balances in their school food than we had. And the only division that we found in the metropolitan area that participates in WABE that had a similar need for a supplement from the school operating fund was Prince George's County. And so that led us to take a look at the expenditure levels of the other divisions to see, you know, how they're spending in their food and nutrition services programs compared to ours. And the difference seems to be the level of employee benefits that divisions provide to their food and nutrition services employees. If you look at some of the divisions, their cost of benefits as a percentage of the total fund, you know, can range between 7% and 10%. And then us and Prince George's County, who also required a supplement, their benefits ranged about 30% of total funds. So we haven't done a full-blown survey because every division is very slow to respond and don't really have time for surveys due to the pandemic. But many of them, it appears, do not provide the level of employee benefits for their employees that we provide for our employees here in Fairfax County. Like I said, Prince George's, it seemed like had a similar benefit package. And the, what I heard anecdotally from their staff, not officially in an email, was that they were going to require about a $20 million supplement. We, you know, requested at mid-year, I think, a $9 million supplement to the Food Services Fund. The board approved that, and that was the calculation that we expected for the remainder of fiscal '21. We are closely monitoring of the Food Services Fund. We do believe at this point in time that that supplement that we did in December will get us till the end of the year. But it will take us years to build that fund balance back up to the level that it was before. You know, obviously, we have the second highest meal prices in the metropolitan area, I think, second only to Falls Church. And we don't want to raise our meal prices even further if we can help it. But there's really only two ways to put money on the bottom line, and that is either increase your revenue or decrease your expenditures. If you look at our food costs, they tend to be similar to the other divisions. There's miscellaneous supply costs. The salaries look to be pretty comparable, averaging about 30%, 35% of a school division's budget. But it is the benefits, the employee benefits, that are provided to those employees where we are most certainly an outlier. And, you know, that speaks to the ability to recruit and have high-quality employees in food and nutrition services. And as Dr. Braybrand mentioned, providing full-service hot food at every school while at the same time standing up grab and go for virtual students and serving 70,000 meals a day is going to be a challenge for us as far as staff resources go.
Well, a quick solution is to stop this 100% for the 50% of our students who don't qualify for FNS. qualify for FR, FRM now that they're back in. This model is really troubling. Dr. Braybrand, I, I look forward to a deeper conversation with you and your team. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Uh, Dr. Anderson?
Okay, thank you. Um, just very quickly, I know regarding the food, I, I hope I had a chance to mention that what I've been hearing on this side, it's not just the portion of the food, but also returning to the hot lunches. Um, and I, I heard, I, I don't remember, Ms. Peron, you shared that 24 schools will be starting on the 6th. Would we be able to have a list of those schools and just the general plan for including all of our schools moving forward? So that's item one. And my second item really quickly, I am really struggling with the uh, with the healthcare funds. I know it's $2 million. Depending on how you're looking at it, it could be a little or it could be a lot. But the fact that our employees um, have to contribute to this fund, which is a disadvantage to them, and the fact that this is a very direct COVID-related expenditure, I, I would love to see that moved to ESER funds, uh, COVID funds, CARES funds, any other funds besides this. Um, so I would like for some uh, consideration of that. Having said that, here's the second piece of my question, Ms. Burden, because I want to continue to build understanding around this. If this is moved to um, ESER funds or COVID funds, will that no longer, will we no longer be able to, to claim this um, through insurance? That's correct. Is that correct?
Uh, yes and no. I mean, you know, we couldn't turn around and claim it to insurance, you know, a couple of years from now. But there is, you know, sometimes a, a lag between claims um, that uh, are incurred but not reported um, at the end of a fiscal year. Um, so you know, we certainly could, could do something different in the short term. But we couldn't, you know, a couple of years from now decide, oh, we really need to use these ESER funds for something else, so we're going to shift it to healthcare. Um, I don't think that would be appropriate.
Um, thank you for that. And I definitely want to have some, some more discussion and consideration in terms of using COVID funds to relieve those vaccinations. Um, I know we have a decision to make about this. We have to vote on this next Thursday. And so I guess sooner rather than later, I'll be in touch with you, Ms. Burden, just to kind of see what could be done and then maybe work with some of my colleagues on that. But thank you, Ms. Maren, and thank you all for the information.
Thank you. And I have one question as uh, as myself as a member. Um, just regarding, regarding the breakfast. So I've noticed in my own children's school, when you went back, that they're now eating breakfast in the classroom at like 9:15. That had never been done before. I know there's a delicate balance between not ostracizing children who need breakfast um, and singling them out. However, now it seems like we've gone to this path where, like, my son is getting breakfast and we're fortunate enough to not rely on it. And I actually think it's a distraction. Um, and it's one more thing for the teacher to be handing this stuff out while she's trying to teach concurrently. So I was really surprised at that. Um, you know, can the staff please consider how to, you know, weigh this out or, you know, figure out what schools had been offering breakfast normally during, in pre-COVID times? And, you know, I don't know, I know needs have changed. It's just, it's, it just seems like a distraction. And given all the other questions about quality and, and that it does, it has been on my mind this past week. So please consider that, and I look forward to an update on that in the near future. So. Okay, any final remarks? Um, it seems like we've uh, everyone's asked their questions, though. Um, Dr. Anderson or maybe Mr. Frisch, since you're the meeting, uh, you're one of the meeting managers for our 1:30 return to school session. So we're now half hour early. Do we want to bump up lunch, go 12:30 to 1:00 and return at 1:00 for the return to school meeting?
Uh, Elaine, I don't know where you are on this, but I think that makes sense.
Well, I saw Dr. Braybrand shaking his head yes vigorously. Since you're making the presentation, Dr. Brayband, uh, I will certainly agree to go with that.
Okay, great. So, so we will go ahead and do that. So we'll.
Ms. Maren? Ms. Maren, my, because I had my hand up, um, from a process question. Um, Chairman Anderson and Dr. Braybrand and our clerk of the board. I, I thought there's an issue that we advertised that the next work session topic would start um, at 1:30. And so for the public, um, who's, who's going to tune in, they're going to find that we started without them. So I just want to make sure we're not violating what we're supposed to do and how we publish a meeting and.
Yeah, and I, I did raise this question to our chair earlier, and I'd like to hear her thoughts. I also just want to ask, is this any different than when we start late and the public can't attend because we've gone a half hour over? So Dr. Anderson, Ms. Picarzey, um, Dr. Anderson, you want to speak and then Ms. Picarzey?
Yeah, very quickly, because I also asked the same question of our clerk, just to be sure we weren't in violation of any regulation. And we aren't. Obviously, it's not ideal. It's not ideal to start late and it's not ideal to start earlier either. But I believe that during this 30-minute recess that we'll take, we'll have an opportunity to maybe shoot and post um, certain uh, messages just to say that we will be starting about a half hour earlier than intended. Um, so we did check with our attorney and with the clerk, just to be sure that we weren't in violation of any regulations. Thank you for raising that.
No, it's good to know.
And I wanted to add, I know our Executive Director of Communications, Ms. Lloyd, is working on getting a process in place so that real-time updates can be made on our platform. So that is in development. So, Ms. Picarzey, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I did want to add, um, just to piggyback on Ms. McLaughlin's concern. I know this is going to be an update that many in our community are waiting and have perhaps planned their day around. And I would uh, much prefer to stick to our posted time so people are able to tune in.
Um, I see Ms. Seizmohizer's hand up, and then I would propose that we take a vote on it. Um, but Ms. Seizmohizer?
I was going to say the same thing. Maybe we take a pulse of the board on it, because I also agree with Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Picarzey, that I think a lot of people in this, in, in other meetings, perhaps, I think it might have been fine. But in this particular meeting, there's a lot of interest in this. And I do think it's, you know, whether we take a longer lunch break is fine with me personally. But I do think there's um, value for this particular work session for return to school to start at the advertised time. So that's my two cents. That's a pulse of the board might be the way to go.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that, please. So folks, if you have your hands raised, please lower them. So the question is, shall we keep our 1:30 return time to begin our next portion of the meeting? Please raise your hands if you can support maintaining our current schedule to begin at 1:30 for the return to school session. Okay, that looks like a majority. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Great, we do have a majority for that. So we will maintain our, our posted schedule. We'll have an extended recess, and at 1:30, Mr. Frisch or Ms. Tolan will reconvene us for the return to school portion of our meeting.
Thank you.
Everyone, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.